I get corrected far too often.
Why not?
Whatever you want it to be.
It's morning somewhere.
Welcome to our board of selectus meeting for October 7th, 2019. I'll start by reading the, as required by the open meeting law, you are hereby informed that the town will be video and audio taping, as well as live broadcasting this public meeting. In addition, anyone in the audience who plans to video or audio tape this meeting must notify the chairman prior to the start of the meeting. Is anyone inclined to do so? If not, we'll move to the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Joe, can you give us an update on the, where we are with the sewer in East Harwich?
Certainly, certainly, Mr. Chairman. This is the construction schedule weekly update. This was submitted to administration on October 2nd. For the one, one week look ahead for the, this week of October 7th through October 11th, the Mainline Sewer Crew Number One will continue installation on Joanna's Path, begin installation on Route 39, middle to the end of the week is the tentative start on that. That will require detours. Mainline Sewer Crew Number Two, continue installation on Route 137, which again necessitates detours. For the two-week look ahead for October 15th to the 18th, that's because they will not be working on Monday, October 14th, which is the state holiday. During that week, Mainline Sewer Crew Number One will continue installation on Route 39, again requiring detour. Mainline Sewer, Mainline Sewer Crew Number Two, continue installation on Route 137, which requires detours. And the three week, three-week look ahead for October 21st to the 25th, the Mainline Sewer Crew Number One will continue on installation on Route 39. Mainline Sewer Crew Number Two, continue installation on Route 137, and again, both of those requiring detours. With this update, they did provide us with some detailed information showing some of the, the mapping areas and the level of detail that they're going through as, as the project progresses. This was a progress report that is through October 1st of 2019. That's the second page. And both items were posted to the website.
Thank you, Joe. Any comments, questions? Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's not so much a comment on the presentation right now, but I've gotten questioned by a bunch of people, so I was wondering if we could put this on the agenda, so if the town administrator shows up to a meeting, we can have a discussion about why the pipe down 137 seems to be taking a left turn and then a right turn.
Okay.
I'm just curious about that.
Anyone else? If not, anyone else for public comment? Those?
Hi. I have to read. Hello, I'm Elizabeth Harder, and I'm the Harwich delegate to the Barnstable County Regional Government Assembly of Delegates. Thank you for letting me speak today. This all happened before you, after you had already set the agenda, so thank you for letting me speak today. And if anyone has any questions about this, I'm happy to come back next week, when I can be put on the agenda. But I just wanted to let people know that what happened was, at our last assembly meeting, we have been working on the charter review, and one of the ideas that came up was to get rid of the three county commissioners and make our bicameral county government the assembly, keep the Assembly of Delegates, and make it a strong county administrator with a deputy administrator. It's just an idea, but three commissioners makes it very difficult for them to get work done because if two of them run into each other in a supermarket and say, "What was that about? They've broken open meeting law." So that's just one of the reasons we are considering it. It is not definite. I have put handouts out here with the press release, and if anyone wants to make any comments, we are having the public hearing about this at the assembly next Wednesday, the fourteenth, the sixteenth, at 4:30, which is in the East Wing Conference Center at the back of the Barnstable County complex, and you'll be able to make comments. Or you can send me an email at elizabeth.harder@barnstablecounty.org. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a clarification. Elizabeth, is that the, the room that you normally meet in?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it's the new wing.
They used to call it something else.
Well, there's the, there's the harbor view room.
Oh, okay.
We're now new, this is new. It used to be the jet.
Okay. Good.
And it's, and it's beautiful now. I have the incredible view. Thank you, and their handouts.
Don't, don't go anywhere.
Well, we have, this, Don has a question for you as well.
You weren't allowed to. I'm not allowed to ask questions.
No, we can ask a question. We're not deliberating on it. I'm just wondering, because I see the press release and I've seen the newspaper stuff, but I haven't been able to drill down on anything. Just so the public knows, if this were the case, if this were adopted, are we still talking about weighted vote? Were people in, like, a lot more votes than the people in Harwich?
Yes, but then, I mean, this goes through so much. If, you don't know, what happens is, if the assembly recommends it, then it has to go to the state legislature. Then if they pass it, it comes to a vote. So it's not like we can snap our fingers. And I would think that if we do decide to get rid of the commissioners, we would change the weighted vote so that if your town had, you know, over, would be able to have more than, say, like, 12.7 percent. So for example, Barnstable might need two delegates, because otherwise Barnstable would have a whole lot of power.
Well, that's kind of why I asked. It's, I just wanted to know whether it was a same, so it's the same weighted vote thing?
Yeah, no, it would be a weighted vote, and then we'd just discuss. I mean, even with Barnstable having a large, the largest vote on the assembly, we still get things done that Barnstable, with Barnstable voting no, can be done. It's just, it would just be a lot easier if we broke Barnstable up into two. Also, if it's, if it would just be the Assembly of Delegates with the administrator, we would have more work to do, at which point I think it would be more fair to the delegate from Barnstable, maybe Falmouth, to have more of them so that they're not overwhelmed with work.
Thank you, Elizabeth. I'll ask you to come back if developments proceed. I realize there's lots of steps, but.
Yes, yes. So, yeah, I mean, public marrying, hearing, hear what we have to say, or it's on YouTube. And, and then as it moves on, I'll report back.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Carolyn.
Hello. Just wanted to let you know that on Friday, October 18th, is our boutique, which is when we collect gently-used costumes. And last year, we had well over 125 given out to a lot of our members of the community. So we are very fortunate, we've gotten quite a few costumes, but that is a free event. They just come in and pick out whatever costume they would like in the community center from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. on Friday, October 18th.
Okay, thank you, Carolyn. Anyone else for public, Mr. Hooper?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. After reading Mr. Galvin's article on solid waste, I was reminded that the board had an expectation that we'd be talking about that this evening. I just want to be clear that we are waiting for Mr. Kamara, ABC Waste, to, ABC Waste, to generate a contract for us to review and discuss.
Yeah.
You'll be the second to know, after me.
All right. Thank you, Link. Anyone else for public comment, announcements? Ed?
Yeah, last week, and two weeks ago, I gave a report on the Cranberry Festival and suggested that we were in desperate need and looking for additional volunteers. The next meeting of the festival committee will be on Wednesday, October 30th, at the community center at 6:30. And if you have an interest in helping us along, or want to just put your two bits in, please show up.
Thank you. Anyone else? Moving on to new business, we have annual meeting with the board, Capital Outlay Committee. Rich, are you leading this fine-looking group? Joe's leading this. Someone has to take the charge here.
I got it. Good evening, gentlemen. I'm Rich Larrius, and I am the chairman of the Capital Outlay Committee. And before I begin, I'd like to thank the members of the Capital Outlay Committee for their, for their work all year. And fortunately, the majority of them are here. We have Angelo, Joan McParland, and Bruce. And the board, and that's Norine Dunne-Yew. She brings a lot of experience from the Finance Committee and wastewater, so she's a new addition. This year, we were unlucky to leave, to have Chris Harlow leave. He's moved up north, still Massachusetts, but up north. So he left an opening, and fortunately, we got Norine to fill that. We want to thank the town administrator, the finance director, Carol, and Charlene Greenhall for all the work, support, and efforts that they did this year to help the committee understand municipal finance and the county during these fiscal years that have given us a lot of difficult times. I wanted to go over, especially for the TV audience, to help you better understand what the process is that's in place today that we use to get the plan out. The finance director actually puts out capital expenditure request forms, and it goes out in August to the departments and the committees that may or may not have requests for capital expenditures. The input forms the seven-year plan. This year, what will be, what we're funding are the years from 2021 through 2027. The new plan will be delivered by the town administrator by December to the Board of Selectment. It's currently in a working stage. We were fortunate to have four or five committees, departments come in last week. The 15th will be our last, and we will have the majority of the other departments coming in. In fact, we're meeting tomorrow night and have some departments coming in, too. The plan considers more than the expenditure, it also considered debt service. And it's just as an FYI, and you have a copy of this in your, in your folder, the debt service right now for 2021 is about $7 million. You'll have the plan by January, and that plan will be flexible, I want to use the word, or it may have changes at town meeting. Okay, so it's a dynamic document. The plan itself is the end product, but it's just not coming in and finishing the product. It's what we do during the year, and I thought I'd give you what the process generates the work for us. We meet monthly, or at an hock situation, like getting this thing done by January, which sometimes is not easy. We want to stay informed and ahead of what we think is coming. Came up with an idea about five years ago that we would run a bus tour, and I think some of you may have been on it, or on them. And in fact, last year, we had a boat tour by the harbor master to find out some of the things that are happening out of the water. He said, so I didn't go, but my, my members all went and reported back. The process of their coming in, they're getting more acquainted with the request form, they understand the out years, which we used to do placeholder numbers, and now they're becoming, and they're subject to change. And I think we have a better handle what to expect in the future. The requests, and I think we've talked about this before, because I brought it up, we want to keep the expense or the expenditures really level. We don't want any high curves in a certain year when things we know are going to be sloping downwards. So we want to keep it steady. And that dependent, is dependent on what the Board of Selectment decide, what percentage or what dollars do you want to spend. We're working more closely with the CPC. They certainly have the ability to fund some projects that we may recommend or work together to see what's the best funding for it. I also brought up, probably about two years ago, we want to identify, or we can identify assets that could be sold off and use the asset value for better use. I mean, that's the bottom line on that. We don't always agree with some of the taxpayers, but that is something to look for as we move forward. The other thing, and we've, we've been very lucky with getting the maintenance department or that general process better under hand, due to the fact that if you extend the asset life, you're going to get more value out of it, instead of it breaking down all the We all know that we have some very large expenditures coming up, and I think there are still some that are unidentified, so we want to find out that quickly. And finally, we want to work with the requesters and the taxpayers to preserve the financial integrity of the town of Harwich. So that's pretty much where we are. You can expect the plan, January is subject to, it'll be a finished plan, but it's a dynamic plan, which can change before town meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Rich. I do know, and I appreciate your comment on the item six here is keep the plan to curb the smooth, basically level off the debt service going forward. And that gives your, your, your committee really valuable input into the wastewater planning, because our CWMP now, as you know, is arbitrarily based on five-year phases.
Mm-hmm.
But one of the things we, actually, one of the few things we have control over, some control over is when we phase that in to try to keep our debt service as level as we can. So any, any input, you know, you're asking us for input on that, but you also, you're also critical input on how that is going to affect our debt service in the outlying, outlying years.
I don't know if you've got it, but Carol has done an extensive.
We have, we've seen part of it, yeah.
Extensive report.
That's great.
With the charts and so, it's not, it's not what Ed has, but. You were waving something, and I just.
Yeah, it's, not this one?
No, there's, it's a bar, bar charts.
Okay.
And she might have it, I'm sorry, she might have it at the joint meeting, at the joint.
She's been working on it, I think, I don't think we have the updated version that you have.
Okay. It's really valuable.
Right. But that's, I'm just saying, that's one thing we're doing, it's a two-way street. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you guys for all the work you do. I'm just trying to make sure that we're all communicating well. The DHY possibility that we're going to be taking up at town meeting, how involved are you right now in the sequencing of all of that?
We're not.
Okay, just so you know, because you're here in front of us tonight, 75% of the cost of that is the town's cost, not the shared cost. And it, it actually re-sequences the CWMP to bring it in to earlier years. And then there's the paving of the road, where we have to actually deal with that before they tear the road up and put it back, or we have to wait another five years. So I beg of you, this is something that's going to be a town meeting discussion, and it has to have numbers behind it, because anything less than that is just smoke and mirrors.
And Don, I appreciate that, and our knowledge of it is important. The numbers have to be reported to us, so we, we don't come up, we can't come up with the numbers. You'll get it from somebody. We can generate it in some kind of algorithm to get us to where we want to go.
No, I get that. The only reason I brought it up is it's, it's a better discussion to bring up now in October, if you guys are heading towards January and, and into town meeting, than in January.
Are you, are you anticipating it being in the capital plan?
It almost has to, if they're going to tear up the road in 2022.
Then somebody, well, somebody has to generate it as a request, either, sorry? I, I, yeah, that's what I'm saying. No, I'm saying that. Link, maybe?
No.
No.
I'm not trying to blow up the room, I'm just saying.
No, no.
You guys need to be together with FinCom and with the Board of Selectment, we need to do a numbers-based analysis of what we're doing and what the implications of everybody's tax bills are going to be.
I couldn't agree with you more, and I think that's what I, I cover that on Better Understanding and Analyze, extremely large amounts that have not been identified yet. And that's.
There you got one.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Michael?
No, I would also thank you and thank the committee for all the work you did. And then just to expand on what you said, and I guess through our assistant town administrator, there's also an $8 million oops in East Harwich that really should be in the plan as well. But obviously, you guys don't have that either, so maybe Joe, the administrator, could be tasked with giving them the actual numbers of.
Anyone from the audience care to comment? Thanks to you all. It's really an important committee. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Bye. Next on your agenda is Historic District and Historical, Historic Commission. Hello, Mary.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. My name is Mary Malzlewski. I'm the chairperson of the Historic District and Historical Commission. You should each have a copy of our 2019 on your table this, this evening. So in 2019, the Historic District and Historical Commission continued our role as preserving and protecting the historically designated properties within the town of Harwich during our monthly hearings. Our numbers in fiscal 19 were up, and they were the busiest they've been since I've been on the commission since 2016. We heard a total of 33 applications. There were historic district certificates. We approved eight certificates of appropriateness, and one was withdrawn without prejudice. We also heard 24 notices of intent for demolition. We granted 19 of those applications, imposed two demolition delays, and three were withdrawn. One of the highlights of the commission this year was the issuance of the certificate of appropriateness for 7-Eleven Main Street and Harwich Center. This project will bring a new building, new business, and new residences to the historic Harwich Center, and will revitalize the former Missouri Gas Station. Additionally, the commission did impose a 12-month demolition delay on Harwich Center to 52 Route 28 in West Harwich, which is a part of what's been referred to as Captain's Row. More recently, the commission was excited to support your board's efforts in the application to the Cape Cod Commission for, to establish the District of Critical Planning Concern in West Harwich. And the commission looks forward to providing any assistance we can to both the Board of Selectment and the planning board as that process moves forward over the next year. In addition to conducting regular monthly business, the commission also continues to implement the historic 100-year inventory list, and we have applied for a 2020 Community Preservation Act funding to do further investigation into additional clusters within the town of Harwich, so that we're fully informed and can adequately protect the vital assets for the town. Further, I would like to thank the Board of Selectmen. This is the first time that we have a full complement of seven members on our Historic Commission and one alternate. It is extremely important for us to keep our membership up, because without, without that, it's difficult to keep a quorum and to be able to make, have our hearings be timely. So we have had much more success with that since we've had a full membership. I would also say for you and for the public that we do still have four associate memberships or associate members vacancies. So if anybody is interested, I would respect, respectfully request that they fill out a citizen activity form and drop it off to the Selectmen's office, so that we can add to our alternate associate membership as well. And finally, I'd just like to say that we're thrilled to have added three new members to our commission this year. Brendan Lowney and Julie Eldridge have both joined as full members. Angelo Kiriakides has joined as an associate member. And as I said, there are four more vacancies for associates. And as a final notice to the residents, we meet the third month, the third Wednesday of every month, here in this room, in the Griffin Room at Town Hall, at 6:00 p.m. We invite everybody to attend, to attend if anyone is interested. We post all of our meetings, both with the town clerk's office and on the town's website, so agendas are fully published.
Okay. Thank you, Mary. Just to add to your, remind people that the citizens' activity form, you can pick them up at their, at the town administrator's office, and also, they're online.
And we also have them in the town clerk's office as well.
And so there's no excuse now for volunteering for any committee, right?
Exactly.
Mary, are you, over the years, we've had, it seems, serious discussions on historic inventory lists. Is that moving to your satisfaction, or is, I know that's been an issue in the past?
So we had had one round of funding that had stalled, was issued from CPA back in 2016, so that was rescinded. So this application is essentially our attempt to try and get that money back, so that we can now kind of proceed with that deep dive into some of the additional clusters, where there are three, four, or five historic buildings in a, in a small area.
Looking forward, what, what kind of deadline timeline are you looking at?
So I would hope that if town meeting passed the funding for that, that it would be able to go on the fall procurement agenda for, for the town. But, you know, we would, Bob Doan has been kind of working on that. He spoke with Charlene Greenhall, the town planner, and has kind of done some of the background on that and prepared the application for the committee. So we had taken a quick look at it. He had come up with a proposed budget, which is essentially slightly more than what we had had rescinded earlier this year, and came up with some identifiable areas that, that he was suggesting that we have a consultant take a look at.
Okay. Thank you, Mary.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, comments?
Just thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Next on your agenda is Planning Board. Mr. McFarland?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Joe McFarland, chairman of the Planning Board. After 12 years on the Planning Board, I finally stopped practicing law, so I had an opportunity to become the chair this year, and I am enjoying it. 2019 has been one of the busiest years for the Planning Board in the past 10 years. As of September 25th, 2019, there have been the same number of applications as received in 2018. On behalf of the board, I would like to acknowledge Charlene Greenhall, town planner, Elaine Banta, planning assistant, and Katie Tenagler, for their invaluable work for the board. The board saw the departure of Jim Joyce this summer, and suffice to say, he will be sorely missed, and welcomed with its newest members, Bill Stoltz and Duncan Berry. We still have two vacancies of alternate members, which we'd like the board to consider. As of September 24th, the board has held 18 meetings. There were two cases carried over from 2018 and 37 applications this year. Board took the following actions. We endorsed two approved, not required, plans. That was a misnomer, but that's what they are. Approval not required, but we have to approve them. Approved four definite, definitive subdivision plans, with three subdivision plans pending. We approved three preliminary subdivision plans, eight U-special permits. Reviewed 10 site planned special permits and U-special permits. Of those, six were approved, two withdrawn, and two are pending. Reviewed four site plans, of those, two approved and one pending, and one withdrawn. Reviewed four of our site plans, two approved and two withdrawn. Approved divisions of land and have created four new building lots. We also sponsored four zoning amendments, including accessory apartments by right, freestanding portable signs, building height, zone for existing structures, and relief for retaining walls as they pertain to septic systems. All of the zoning amendments were approved by the town meeting and the Attorney General. As a result of the controversial case in West Harwich, the board was asked by the Board of Selectmen to review the possibility of a District of Critical Planning Concern, DCPC, nomination for Route 28 corridor known as Captain's Row. The board reviewed a draft prepared by town planner Greenhall, and on September 10th, majority of the board voted to recommend the nomination of DCPC to the Board of Selectmen. The board anticipates beginning its review and discussing potential zones. The Board anticipates beginning its review and discussing potential zoning amendments this month, and will continue with this work. The Board also supported the application for funding for CPC grants for the Housing Trust and Coordinator, Housing Trust and Coordinator, and the acquisition of land for both the affordable housing and open space. Currently, the Board has two openings for alternative members. Timely appointments are vital for the Planning Board to complete its change, its charge, and to continue to support and review multifaceted projects during winter absences by members. Some of our members have a tendency to disappear where it gets warm in the winter. At this time, all Board members are up to date on their ethics training.
Thank you, Joe. Any questions for Joe?
Thank you, Joe.
Don?
Yeah, it's not so much a question, two things. First one is, I went up last Thursday, and a couple of members, the Planning Board went up, I think Mr. Harris and Mr. Berry. The Cape Cod Commission unanimously accepted the application for the DCPC, and they're gonna act thereon.
I had to be here at a Capitol Outlay Meeting, that's why.
I'm not taking attendance, I'm just telling you that that was the result of your referral. Secondly, just to get it out there, the alternates, if people are going away, aren't gonna do you any good for most things you do.
I understand.
Because they can't listen to most things.
I know what their authority is, yes, sir.
Okay.
But we still, it would help us get a quorum on occasions when that's touch and go. I understand the problem, everybody else has it, I'm not the only one, I've spoken to other Board Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. Moving on then to B, is vote to approve application of lodging house and inholder's license for Sands Hospitality. Time to move in, Michael?
I move that we approve the application for lodging house or inholder's license for Sands Hospitality, Inc., DBA Platinum Pebble Boutique Inn.
Second.
Second, any discussion? Great, you have a, you have a great property, and a joy. C, is approved Administrator's recommendation for grant proposal permission, Michael?
I move that we approve the Administrator's recommendation to, to grant permission to NSTAR to install 55 feet of conduit and cable and 101 handheld number 73 H3A in Old Wharf Road, with the stipulation from the Highway Department, Old Wharf Road, as an explanation, Old Wharf Road was recently resurfaced and is under road cut moratorium until 2022, so all work must be done on the soft shoulder only.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion, any comments, all in favor?
Aye.
D, vote to support Community Preservation Act funding for maintenance of town-owned conservation land in amount of $20,000. Michael?
Move that we support the Community Preservation Act funding for maintenance of town-owned conservation land in the amount of $20,000.
Second.
Any discussion, comments, all in favor?
Aye.
We're going unusually quickly here.
Wants to back up?
E is vote to approve request by Lawrence Brophy, a member of Affordable Housing Trust, to allow participation by FaceTime. Michael?
I move that we approve the request for Lawrence E. Brophy, member of Affordable Housing Trust, to be allowed to participate remotely via FaceTime for Affordable Housing Trust meetings from December until, December through March.
Second? Discussion, Don?
This is just a generic discussion. I love Larry's insight on things, he's, he certainly has a lot of knowledge and everything, but at some point or another, I'm kind of concerned about programming or baking into the cake. Certain members are always gonna be away for months at a clip on things that are really important, that are actually gonna spend millions of dollars of taxpayers' money too. So while I'll vote for this now, we have to have a broader discussion of just how much we really want to have remote participation in all these committees.
Interesting point, Don, I think we have to be careful of this. We have some members, and I would say Larry's one there, brings enough expertise to, to try to make it work, go the extra mile and make it work.
I get that, but I've been.
But we need to be careful.
I've been in situations where he can't count as part of the quorum. So we've had situations where nonetheless, we're getting problems being able to meet because he could be on Skype and be ready, but if there's only two other people, he can't count.
And that's certainly an important point, we need a quorum in-house, but, Michael?
Well, and I would say I agree with Don, and let's bring this back. I mean, we do have other committees where members have extended their winter vacation to five months, and, and one, I think, six months, and I think sooner or later we should. I know I've had four missed meetings, and you're off.
There you go, ask a way. Leo, Mr. Kakounis?
Thank you. This is an interesting topic, and I think a lot of towns and certainly municipalities and boards and committees are being faced with this problem because it's growing more and more. Want to participate remotely because the law generally allows it now. However, if you read the law specifically, there will be some that'll argue that being away for an entire five months a year consecutively, every single year, does not fall into the language. Certainly, if somebody is far enough away or not around, and I, I don't remember the actual language that's in there, but the driving distance is, affects it. And certainly, if they're on vacation for that particular week or two weeks, I think the, clear. But to start allowing people to now, who, as a lot of people in this room know, a lot of people here on the Cape do winter for five months at a time. I'm just not sure if, if we are meeting the letter of the law, and not only you guys, but a lot of boards and committees. So I think we should investigate it a little bit more too.
We'll do that.
I think that's Leo and I agreeing again.
No way.
Okay. We have a, we have a motion on the floor in a second, any more to you? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
unanimous pass, E is, or excuse me, now F now is the Traffic Safety Committee. First reading and discussion of the policy. Jerry, you wish to lead us through this?
Good evening, Jerry Beltis, Chairman of the Traffic Safety Committee. The Select Board asked us to come up with a traffic calming policy after their request for speed bumps came up. Rather than me get the whole committee involved, I asked Linda Sebula at Jerry's Canal and Charlene Greenhalgh. They put together a work group and came up with the draft that we have to you. So I'm gonna let Linda present it, I don't have the nuts and bolts how they came about, so.
Okay. Welcome, Linda.
Gentlemen, as Jerry said, we worked with Charlene, our town planner, and we looked at several other communities that had traffic calming policies. And this is the proposal that is before you. We are proposing to have no speed bumps or speed humps on public roads, Harwich public roads, because of course, we can't do anything about a state road or a private road. We went through the police, we sought input from the Police Department, Fire Department, and of course, our DPW sits on the Traffic Safety Committee with a representative, as does a representative of the Police Department. Do you have any questions?
Michael?
I guess the only question, first, great job, I read through it, I think you spent a lot of time on it. The only problem I have is the no speed bumps or humps. And I guess I would ask why, and I guess I would ask, is that, what's quoted in here, is that a law? Or is that just what the Traffic Safety Committee came up with?
When you say what's quoted, what are you, what are you referring?
Speed bumps and/or humps are prohibited on town roads. The 2018 International Fire Code, IFC, Section 503.4.1 states that. Is that a law, or is that just a recommendation by the Traffic Safety Committee?
The speed bumps and humps are prohibited on town roads is the recommendation of the Traffic Safety Committee?
Okay.
As part of this policy?
Okay, and then I guess maybe to, through you, Mr. Chair, and Link, Highway Director. Are we defining public roads in this? Because I know there's a certain amount of roads that are not on the approved snowplow list or you won't maintain.
That's spelled out, excuse me, Link Hooper, DPW Director. That is spelled out in our private snow removal policy that was adopted by the Board of Selectmen, and private neighborhoods are allowed to have speed bumps as long as they're removed by a certain date. And I think that was November or something, or they do not qualify to receive snow and ice services.
Michael?
So the ones that are on the list that, that won't be, that you don't have to snowplow, are those included in this no speed humps bumps?
No, sir, this is just isolated to public roads, any private roads, of which we have 360 of them in town. An example of this is Harbor Road. You go down Harbor Road, it's, it's public, and then it turns private. They have speed bumps in there, they pick the speed bumps up sometime in the fall, and then we provide snow and ice services through that whole neighborhood.
Okay, go ahead.
I guess lastly, my, so my comment on that is, I think it's part of a policy. I, I don't believe that that should be written into the policy, my own feeling. I know we had a situation two years ago where neighbors were very concerned in the campgrounds, and the Board of Selectmen did vote, the fire chief did chime in at that time, and I believe the police chief did as well, but I know the fire chief did and, and wasn't opposed to the speed humps. Certainly, it would slow down the fire trucks, but I think as Norm has said in the past, when we discussed Hawx Ness, if he's gonna go to a fire or an accident, he's gonna get there. So there's specific situations in parts of town where whole neighborhoods endorse the idea of speed bumps and speed humps. And especially in the campgrounds in Harwichport, we have a lot of kids in very tight alleyways and sudden stop signs. And I, I can't support a policy that just out and out says no speed bumps or speed humps.
If I may, Mr. Chair, I was on vacation two years ago when that discussion came up, and I did submit some materials, and I did a fair amount of research, which I provided to this committee. My, my first stop was MUTCD, Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices, which outlaw, which lines everything that we do in a public right-of-way, traffic-wise, what needs to be done. I mean, it says everything. They don't recommend speed bumps, they don't absolutely prohibit it. Went to the Mass DOT Chapter Two Design Manual, again, they talk about speed. Speed bumps on public roads. They frown against it, they provided me one sheet that detailed that, and they stopped one short of saying, "We wouldn't insure you." They said they were appropriate in these other conditions, like playgrounds or schools or other examples, but said they didn't belong on public roads. I also believe they don't belong on public roads. Down at the campgrounds, I received direction from the Board, the Board voted it, we worked with the abutters. Initially, there was a bunch of, I'm not saying a bunch, there was some strong abutter objection, of which Lynn worked out herself personally. And after those initial growing pains were done, they've given me nothing but positive feedback down there that it's worked well, and I worked, you know, cooperatively with, with those folks, and we're gonna actually remove those next week. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Linda and Norm?
Yes, I think that some of our concerns as to why we got to no speed bumps and no speed humps are the possible damage to vehicles as they go past them, because it gets quite dark around here, and you're not going to see signs, because we have virtually no streetlights. So somebody coming down a road is going to hit them and not see them. We also have some concerns about the liability to the town in terms of those damage to those vehicles. And we are quite concerned that an emergency responder, as that fire truck, ambulance, goes down the street and has to stop at two miles an hour, to two, you know, two miles an hour, go over the speed bump while somebody is in crisis, the house is burning. We're quite concerned about this, and we feel that there's some real public issues in having these on the ground.
Okay.
So thank you.
Chief?
I just want to clarify, the National Fire Protection Association, NFPA standard, does say no speed bumps, speed humps of the type, except one of the last sentences, unless the authority having jurisdiction, that being the fire chief, says it's okay.
Okay. Leo?
I'll have to admit, I haven't had a chance to read the entire report, but I, I liked the discussion on the speed bump issue. I, I'm not opposed to the town taking a stand and having a policy that generally they do not like or want speed bumps. However, I kind of agree with Selectman McCaskill that the Board should have in this document, maybe at the very end, one sentence that says waivers or exemptions can be given, because we do still live in a rural kind of a different community. There are certain applications that these things do work. I, for instance, live on a very lovely town-owned road, well-maintained by the town, very wide, recently paved, it's absolutely beautiful. There's nothing from my neighbor's driveway to my house, almost 2,800 feet, except a beautiful paved roadway. And I'll tell you, I've had nine people smash into my gate at the end of that road because they come flying down there. There are applications where you might want to consider it, and I'm not saying that I want one there, but I'm just trying to use that as an example. There are areas that you may want to consider it, and I would say, suggest to you that as you bring this policy forward, that you do leave, I guess a loophole is the right word, but you do leave room for future Board of Selectmen that are here, or the future Select Board in charge. If an occasion does come up, we mentioned the campgrounds, we mentioned others, I know that little private road, the back road to the bank has them. You might want to just have the leeway to be able to give a exemption or whatever the correct legal term is to it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Linda and Jerry, let me suggest that you look at the possible, give us some leeway, and also possibly have a discussion with Link on how they reach the compromise in campgrounds. Maybe there's some way you can give us a little wiggle room going forward in this policy.
In the back of the.
I was just going to say that.
Packet, there's an application process. And we tried to get signatures of property holders and tenants in there so that we don't have a contest where somebody says, "I'd like it and I don't want it." Last time, two years ago, when the campground came in here, there was a small group of residents, I don't know if they were year-round residents, or seasonal residents, or renters or not. And they spoke up, and you gave them permission to put it in. We want to make it more of a policy where people who are on the property.
And I appreciate that, because after I was done, there's been some, some other feedback, so.
Okay.
Linda and Michael?
But I think that it was, yes, I was just gonna point out the petition form and the application to describe the requests. We will go back to our committee, and we will discuss how to put some words in here that would give some leeway, if appropriate. And that, does that satisfy?
I think so, Michael?
Yeah, that was gonna be my comment, the only thing, Linda, that I would say is, I appreciate the application. That, that small group of people that you spoke of was, I think it was 95% of the neighborhood with addresses and signatures, so it wasn't renters or anything else. The application is perfect, but the line where you say, "Speed bumps and/or humps are prohibited on town roads."
Yep.
I believe that should be removed, and to Larry's point and Leo's point, we should add some language that the Board could overrule and, and grant it if, if, if they decide.
The committee, again, as I said, we will take back these comments, and we will reassess and come back with some way to put a loophole into it.
I, I.
I like the loophole.
I actually don't like the word loophole, but.
I know, I don't either.
An override by, an override by the Board, but masking around people who travel the world, people who travel the Cape and the state, most towns don't allow it. I saw some in Barnstable on One Road, a friend has a condo down in Florida. When they repaved the parking lot, the Fire Department said, "You can't have speed bumps in your parking lot."
What I'm suggesting is, is not to, not a general loophole, but make it very difficult to get. You know, so we get an extreme case where we have, you know, in this case, a couple years ago, worried about small kids and everything running around, we do have a way to address neighbor concerns.
Understood.
Okay, Ed?
Yeah, you know, as we've, in this town, applied speed bumps, they've been on the temporary basis. You put them in during the summer when traffic's heavy, and you pull them out during the winter when we're snowplowing. And that's probably inappropriate. And that's probably an appropriate way to do speed bumps on roadways. My concern is the roadways in question should be roadways that are in congested, highly densely populated neighborhoods, like, like the campgrounds. In other towns and cities around the country I've seen them in, that's where you find...
You wouldn't put them on Twenty-Eight or...
Yeah. Or, you know, I, I understand Leo's problem on, on his road, but, but, you know, you got a straight paved road, nicely paved road with almost no houses on it. The last thing you'd, anybody would truly expect would be a speed bump. And at speeds, I know some of them go down there. You, you would take, do a significant job on, on the front end and possibly oil pan of most cars if they hit, hit it. And the town would be subject, I think, to some liability. But, you know, what I've also seen, though, on a more permanent basis, but I'm not sure that really any of our neighborhoods qualified of having that densely populated, year-round population and, and, you know, of small roads, is permanent solutions, which are speed tables. There are a number of municipalities in the more metropolitan areas of the San Francisco Bay area that have a whole system of speed tables. And sort of, in, in intersections, I don't know what they're called, sort of barricades in the center. And, and it's entirely to keep certain neighborhoods, you know, small neighborhood areas to be used in times of congestion. For them, it's commute time. For us, it's summer traffic season, from becoming the cut-through neighborhood or cut-through pass, which, you know, we want to, I think, protect some of our neighborhoods through because it's, it's not safe having a whole stream of cars decide to take a, a left, a left and a left through the campground to, to avoid something that's happening on Lower County, so.
Agreed, because there are many, there are many communities that do neck downs. We don't have the room for that on many of our roads. There are also communities, I mean, one of the things that we're a victim of is all of these things apps, like Waze. So if there's a little traffic, it takes you through all the backs, small streets. That's not something we can control unless we start putting signs up, like I know they do in my former community of Newton, where it says, "Do something that..." And I'd also like to call your attention to page thirteen of this, which is description of and photos of traffic calming devices and techniques. Speed tables are in there, and we encourage the speed table. It's safer for the cars, it's safer for everything else. But we will take all these comments back, and I think Link had something to add.
Well, let me get Don first, then we'll get to you, Link.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm just trying to parse through all this, because if you had to put it in paper, what we've already said would be bigger than the policy itself. So let me suggest that the default position should be that we don't allow speed bumps and that there be a mechanism that's defined in the policy where you could seek an exemption and, and get one and probably have the fire chief as part of that policy. Because I'm fine with it if that happens. It would allow for that possibility, but it would be stating that our default position is no, unless we grant it.
Link?
I'd like to remind the board that those particular abutters purchased all of those speed bumps, the signs and everything else that went along with it to the tune of about five thousand dollars. Once we installed it, which we sought, a traffic engineer, Steve Tupper, Cape Cod Commissioner, was kind enough to come out with us, walk it with the abutters, determine the best placement. Once we installed it, we did come up with some people that were contacting me. We worked through it. We ended up, out of the five we installed, we removed one set that was in front of one particular abutters' house. And then I have not heard a thing since, honestly, since last July. So they seem to be pretty happy in the campgrounds with that. But they did purchase all the materials themselves and we installed it.
Don, you?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we send this back for a second reading to the Board of Selectmen, where they should incorporate, you know, some clear policy about what we just discussed tonight.
Second.
Any more discussion? Not all in favor?
Aye.
And thanks again. Nice job. Next on the agenda is to vote to allow the town minister to execute all contracts as detailed. I was in the October first nineteen memo from Cape and Vineyard Electric Cooperative relative to the Harwich's Round Four PV Storage Project. And I'll comment that this is why we have such a large package this, this week.
Well, you do indeed. I apologize for that. Patty was about to commit suicide. Oh, I'm Liz Argo, I'm the manager of Cape and Vineyard Electric Cooperative.
Excuse me, is that me, Michael, you had a comment yesterday?
Yeah. Just based on the, based on the line item, are we being given a presentation tonight? Or are we voting to allow the town administrator to...
We're going to vote to allow the town minister.
So are we, Ms. Argo is here to give an explanation?
Yeah, and answer questions.
I would, I would suggest that we clarify on agendas what we're doing. Because nothing on this agenda says that we're going to get a presentation on what's in there. I'll leave it up to you to, to decide, but I certainly won't be voting on this.
I, I'm in favor of going ahead because we vote, this is the information, what the vote is. Liz, go ahead and see.
Okay. So I'm really here to basically answer questions on the memo. It is in your packet. We have Harwich participating in the Cape and Vineyard Cooperative's Round Four Storage PV Solicitation Process for roof-mounted ground mounted canopies with and without a battery storage option. We worked with various members of the town. Sean Libby is here, for instance. Leo is here as the, the director and, from Harwich and as a president of CEVAC. And we had twenty project sites. RFP has been, the developers have been chosen with your selections. We are now in the process, we're ready to approve the contracts. You can see in your handout the chart of the projects. There's a Harwich As of Right site, which is your green community site for photovoltaic development, which is one of the projects that has been awarded, is ready for contracting. And that would be about a megawatt in size. And it would be a lease payment to the town of about a hundred and twelve, exactly, a hundred and twelve thousand, six hundred and eighty-five dollars a year. There's an option possibly of a community solar overlay on that, which we would get into after we go forward with this contracting. There's also a project at the Harwich Community Center, which would feed that facility with power. It's a solar canopy, and you can see the price, about a half a penny, which is very competitive. And I know that takes a little explanation. I can go into it if you want. It's basically a fee that reduces, you're, you're going to get a reduction on your, on your electric bill, but there is a fee for that. Obviously, it's to your benefit. You're not going to end up paying anything. See a nice savings. We have, the golf course has two projects, one which is on the cart barn to feed the carts, and one which is a ground mount, which is real close to the maintenance building, to feed power to the maintenance building. And then last, the Harwich Safety Station has some solar, but we're looking to add to it in a solar canopy that would be at the front of the, the, in the facility. So you can see all the prices there per PPA. They're all quite competitive. The prices there are based on the projects being accepted in the SMART program, which is the new state incentive program in Block Four. The SMART incentive program declines as time goes by and those blocks get filled. Then the projects have to go into the next block, which is not as financially incentivized. So that's one reason we're trying to get these projects to move along without delay, so you can get the best benefit. Batteries are proposed for almost all of these installations, not at the As of Right site, because there's no facility there. But where there are facilities, batteries are proposed because they will provide a resilience when the grid goes down. Lithium-ion, they would be outside of the facilities. And there's some calculations on your net benefit, which I'm not going to go into in detail unless you request it. I do want to note that all of the calculations are based, as I just said, on the SMART program. And if you fall out of the current block, then you would be, it would be less. We'd have to recompute and see a little less financial benefit. Also, we need to find out whatever source is going to say about interconnection. And in all cases, there's termination rights. If any of these, either the block is unfavorable or ever-source fees are too high, termination is within your rights. So we've delivered all the final contracts and we understand that you're, we hope that the authorization would be given to the town administrator to execute the contracts. And we look forward to bringing the Harwich projects to realization.
Before Don, you get to you, let me, we, we had a late letter added to our Dropbox this afternoon that walked us through, Joe, can you help me on this? It walked us through a series of signing steps. Could you explain that further?
So there may be reference to the two emails that you had sent, I believe, today to the various towns explaining...
Oh, yes.
Because they confused me, the steps of what we're doing on this one.
If I read it correctly, your instructions were to both ConEd and Green Skies, is that correct?
Right, those are your vendors, yep.
Can you elaborate for the board?
Oh, sure. Those were in anticipation of the execution of the contracts. We're essentially telling the vendors that the execution is imminent, and there are two exhibits which the developers need to fill out. The terms have already been determined, it's just, it was housekeeping. So the emails were basically just saying, "Hey, hurry up and get those exhibits back according to the terms so we can deliver a final final with the town's name and the developer's name," and so on.
I just need to understand, and maybe I'm just going, but we're signing a contract to start the process, is that what we're doing?
Oh, no, the process is, the bidding process is complete. So we, the, the selection is complete. CEVAC on your behalf has been negotiating since May with the vendors that you selected. We finally completed the negotiations and sent all of the completed contracts out in September. So they've been handled by the town and we, we're now here saying, "Okay, hopefully you're ready to go because we want to get your projects into the incentive program and under ever-source review as quickly as we can."
How are the batteries paid for?
Are they paid for? They are part of the SMART incentive. So the batteries are not going to add any costs to your, your projects. And that's thanks to the state. The state is very much supporting storage with solar. So the batteries are sized according to the quote SMART program to provide resilience. And the power purchase agreement prices that we got are, we asked the vendors to give us a power purchase agreement price without the battery and with the battery, and the price remained the same because the incentive program is, benefits you to put in storage.
Okay. Leo, did you comment as well?
Opinion on all of this. First of all, I think most of you, the board members, know, but maybe members of the public that are here in the room and those that are watching at home don't understand what really happens here. But CEVAC is basically a cooperative, and we're a cooperative made up of all the towns. And instead of Harwich going out and seeking a developer or a RFP for the right-of-site, for instance, the little piece of land that you've dedicated for a renovation on Queen Anne Road, and only putting that alone out, you would probably attract, I don't know, one maybe person interested in it. So it benefits the town by, because of you're a member of CEVAC, what CEVAC does is takes all the projects, a number of different towns, and puts them into a pool, if you will, and this one is called Round Four. So of the Round Four projects, the ones that you are responsible for, if I will, are the ones that Liz has so graciously gone through. Number of other projects in the Round Four program, none of them concern the town of Harwich, they are other members of the cooperative that have projects in there. But what that did is, is that put out an RFP that had, for lack of a better way to put a handle on this, of possible megawatt hours for a developer to bid on, as opposed to just one at a time. He, he had a chance, or she had a chance, the company had a chance to look at all of them. That process then moves forward to a typical RFP process. We have a deadline for the developer to have their contracts in, or proposals in, both the cost proposal and the basic proposal. We have an opening. And, correct me if I'm wrong, Liz, but when we specifically look at the ones that bid on the town of Harwich projects, I think you had a member of the town with, on your...
Town's with us.
Yeah, so we do, when we open the bids and review the documents and select the developer, CEVAC does in fact have a representative from that member town that the development is going on and they are going through to select the best contractor for your specific projects. And hopefully that developer will pick up two or three other projects with the other member towns. So basically, this evening, you know, we are here now to tell you that after all that paperwork and long work that CEVAC has done for you, we are ready and presenting you with contracts that have been negotiated out, have gone through the procurement process, and are basically in the best interest of the town of Harwich to move forward, especially on, well, all of the projects, really. My only concern is that if there's a delay on this, is that, and I don't know much about this, but the SMART program, all of these programs, whether it comes from the state or the feds or wherever it comes from, as you well know, they all have deadlines. They all have, we're only going to offer this for X amount of time. And the developers bid on these in anticipation that they're going to have these projects up and running to benefit from those projects. So I think that as we move forward, I'm just here to tell you I feel, you know, confident in my staff, if I may, and your town selection committee having done their due diligence on the reviewing of the contracts and the people that bid on these projects. And I suggest you move forward. And quite frankly, I mean, and if I may, to Selectman McCaskill's concern, the agenda does in fact say the Harwich Round Four PV Storage products, projects. I guess you maybe should have listed the four projects. But then again, someone could go to your website and punch in the Harwich Round Four projects or the Harwich PV pending projects and find them. I, I'm not, I'm not sure if it's too much of a violation of your open meeting law, but I think it, it kind of skirts the line. You might have been able, maybe just listed the actual four projects that Liz did just now. And is that, I'm sure, if her memo was sent to you and it's in the packet, then those projects have been actually put out there to the general public so that they know what we're talking about here this evening. So I feel comfortable, we can move forward.
Okay, Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, let me say, I think this is a great idea. The particulars of it are fine with me and it's something we should be doing. Having said that, all of the backup data that's in this is fraught with blanks and host municipality comments and placeholders. We have, we're fighting a credibility problem in general with our contracts. We, two weeks ago, we rescinded the contract authority for the town administrator down to twenty-five thousand across all instruments. Change orders, exempt classes of contracts, everything. While I'm comfortable to a certain degree that those blanks will be filled in, I am not comfortable in redelegating something that we took away two weeks ago. So I, I would be willing to execute the contracts if the Board of Selectmen were executing them, but not if the town administrator's doing it.
That's fine. That's fine. I can have the, the finalized contracts in your hands by tomorrow. It's, it's a very, it's really just filling in the name of the...
It may be a bit of a nuance, but I think what we're trying to do is, is let CEVAC, the cooperative, execute the contracts, and all we're doing is approving the town minister to approve them from our side. They're doing the...
That's, that's correct.
Okay, Michael?
We can either put in one slot for the town administrator as the signator, or we can put in five for the Board of Selectmen as the signator, or four, I guess.
How time-sensitive, how time-sensitive? I know what Leo...
I'm, I'm leaving October fifteenth for, to be out of the country. And we are trying to make sure that the vendors have everything that they need so that they are not stalled in moving forward while I'm gone.
So next question is, I guess through Joe Powers, Assistant Town Administrator. What will the town have to do to vet these contracts once all the blanks are filled in?
Griffin and I meet regularly, so we'll just plow through all six contracts, just make sure the languages confirm the dollar amounts there and do our usual due diligence.
Okay. I guess, Larry, if I may still, the, 100% on board with what Don said, we rescinded the contracting authority because this, a previous Board of Selectmen gave it for Phase Two wastewater and then took it back. So I don't see why we would give it again and then take it back again. As far as the timeline goes, you know, the next, the next agenda item, actually no, I, procurement update and prioritization schedule. How long's this been done? And how long has the town known about it?
Oh, since, you've known about Round Four since about this time last year.
Or how long has, how long have we known about these documents?
Since September. Yeah, these, these documents came to you in September as final. You also had these specimen documents that are almost virtually unaltered from what you now, you got those back in May. So from May till September, C-Vac negotiated with you, but the specimen contracts did go out to you back in May. So you've had everything and my understanding is that the town did send it to legal at that time.
Okay. From here is not really a conversation, I think, for Liz, but where I'm going with this is, Joe put this prioritization schedule on tonight because there's a lot of employees that are waiting for a lot of things.
Right.
Our chief procurement officer, who he may have delegated to our new assistant town administrator, hasn't been here long, and our engineer has a lot thrown in his lap. And now we're going to ask again to put something else before other important contracts. And I would ask you as the chair, please don't cut me off, I would ask you as the chair to get to the bottom of why we have lists and why this is the first time we've looked at these documents. And then we can have the other conversation under I.
I'm not cutting you off. This, this comes in because I realized that we had a series of procurement issues out there and I spent together this so we can prioritize them. We can't get them all done at once.
Right.
So we need to be, bring in front of the board.
My point is, this one's not on there, nor is there a bunch of other positions that we're going out for. And the amount of work that's been, being shoveled into the assistant town administrator's lap is not, he can't do that, that amount of work in a day's, day's work. And our chief procurement officer, i.e. town administrator, hasn't been to three of the last four meetings.
Leo?
I just want to say for the record and to clarify any, any cloud that might be out there, this has got nothing to do with C-Vac. C-Vac's not leasing this stuff from you, we're not trying to build this from you. This wasn't C-Vac's idea. The town of Howard, which I assumed, maybe, well, you know what you are when you assume things, or what it does to you, that the Board of Selectmen were the ones that were authorizing to move forward with these projects.
Right.
I'm just here this evening to tell you, we've done our due diligence, we've met the criteria of the 30B requirements. And first of all, and certainly for the record, there's no way, and everyone in this room and all of you know me, except for this gentleman, there's no way I would ask you to sign any document with. I guess what I'm looking for here tonight would just be a vote to say that you would, if you want to sign the contracts yourself, I don't have a problem with that. I've been telling you guys to do that for years. Remember, I stood here and told you not to give people authorities to sign contracts of $50,000. I was opposed to that then, I'm still opposed to it. So if the new policy now is the board signing contracts, that's fine. C-Vac doesn't care who signs it for the town, we really don't. That's not our job, that's your job, number one. Number two, even if you just vote to generally approve these until the contracts, whatever you feel comfortable with, reviewed by your council, when they are 100% complete, then fine. It's just that, you know, to, I don't know how else to handle it other than to table it, and if you table it or if you don't vote on it, it may be sending the wrong message to the developers, which quite frankly are pretty nervous. They want to move forward. They want to know they've won this contract, so. But you guys, you know, do whatever you feel comfortable with. It sounds like you have some internal issues you need to work out. It's not our fault, though.
Mr. Chair, if we, if we moved this tonight for the signature, the Board of Selectmen cannot be brought back on Tuesday and still meet your deadline, or not?
Tomorrow?
No, next Tuesday.
Wait until tomorrow.
No, because I won't be here. And I can't, I, I'm not sure what the difference is. Frankly, we're going to be bringing back the same contracts. They may have a date filled in here and there, but.
No, because as you just heard, we were unaware of any of this stuff prior to tonight. So that's kind of why we're trying to reassert the authority because things are out there that we're committing to.
Well, the worst case scenario is you're just going to, it won't be as lucrative. You still get the, you'll still get the projects, the projects will still go forward, they just won't be as financially rewarding.
Well, then I'm going to take a leap of faith and make a motion that we approve the contracts subject to the signature of the Board of Selectmen.
I'll say second, and then we'll for discussion.
I won't even second it for discussion.
I'll second it for discussion. Michael?
Discussion would be, that's not what is on our agenda tonight, and I'm fine with the consensus, and I'm fine with these projects because as Leo Kukunis said, we did support these, town meeting did support these. So if you're looking for a consensus of the board, that we are okay with these pending looking at a contract and reviewing the contract, I'm perfectly willing to do that.
That won't give the developers the confidence to start spending money because what they have to do now, and they're, they've been actually frankly spending money on your projects in, with, talk about leaps of faith, working with the golf course because you have some issues over there with some running, the power from the street that we're trying to work out in concert with getting the projects in at the golf course. So they've been, we've had multiple phone calls with EverSource to try to work this out with the vendors, on, the vendor in this case, on board to try to help the town of Howard. So they, they, to put in an EverSource interconnection application study costs money. And they have already spent some money, they're not willing to spend more money until they, a consensus isn't going to get them to start writing checks.
Michael?
I guess, and here's where I'm confused, we have blank contracts in the, blank contracts that haven't been vetted by our procurement people, and somebody up there mentioned that legal has looked at them. There's nothing in the packet that shows that legal has looked at anything, and our town administrator isn't here tonight.
I, all I can say is that maybe, I mean, I think Don's motion was to, to take care of that. We'll, we'll fill in the blanks and the contracts you will have back in your hands will have all the blanks filled in. We started working on them today. It's, that's not a huge task. That's housekeeping, like I say. So we can take care of that for you by tomorrow.
My only, my only last comment, that's, you know, the agenda item. The agenda item is the agenda item, and that's, Don's motion doesn't reflect the agenda item. And again, to the public and to Leo, I guess, I guess you are right, we do have some internal problems, lots of internal problems. But I can't support this.
We have a, any other comments? We have a motion and a second, Ed?
I think it's reasonable and prudent for the town to move ahead tonight in authorizing, going ahead with these contracts. The risk of falling out of the program or reducing a lesser financial benefit for it is not in the best interest of the town. But, you know, the issue of who signs the contract, if you look at the town charter, it specifies that the town administrator shall execute all contracts for good and services on behalf of the divisions and departments under the jurisdiction of town administrator, the approval of the Board of Selectmen. We approve it, he simply is the signature that goes on the paper. And, and so, you know, substituting us as the signatory, I don't agree with, but in the, in the, to try and move this project ahead, I'll be willing to go along and vote for this tonight.
Careful, Leo. Leo?
I'm drunk. I think your motion only said, subject to the signatories being Board of Selectmen. I would ask that the motion, person who made the motion, Selectman Howell, just add to it that they be presented in their completed form. That way there, you have that question covered. Certainly if you want them reviewed by council before you sign them, that's something you guys could do anyhow before you sign them. But I think it's important that people know that we're not asking you to sign anything with blank spots, so. Number one. Number two.
Excellent point, that was the motion.
Okay, thank you. Number two, to Selectman McManus's point, I know that the town administrator is authorization to sign contracts and it's usually, the dollar amount is usually determined by the board. However, one of these projects is a lease of town-owned land. And to my knowledge, most leases of town-owned land are signed by the entire Board of Selectmen. So I think to cover yourself, I believe you're doing the right action at this point.
Okay, thank you.
And Mr. Chair, I'm willing to do this primarily because it's not just an outside vendor. This has been vetted, it's been, it's gone through a governmental process, if you will, to get to this point. So I'm willing to stretch it, but you have to understand, as I said, I believe, and I've been hearing a lot from people, that we've got a confidence crisis in the way we've been executing contracts. So we got to do something to demonstrate that we're actually going to see them and then vote on them. So I appreciate it, Leo.
I could just make the note that C-Vac would never deliver the final contracts for signature without everything filled in.
I get it, but we wouldn't see it otherwise.
Your package was to get this onto, frankly, this is the only town where we had to include the contracts in the board package. Usually, that's something that the legal department's handling, but we, we did that. So they were, and to expedite, Patty was losing her mind, we got her some that we had that didn't have the final dates and names, so.
Okay. Ed?
As, as to the review, you know, we're a member of C-Vac and so by extension, C-Vac is part of our staff.
We have spent.
I consider it. And, yeah, yeah, you know, and our staff participated in the process, so I don't have any problem with the review that's gone on.
Okay. Any more discussions? We have a motion and a second. Don?
So you're going to bring back fully filled in contracts?
Yes.
For us to sign?
Yep.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Three in favor, one opposed, so thank you for all your work and we'll, we'll get the completed contracts back.
All right, I'll be back at you tomorrow.
I know the golf course for one would be very happy. Okay, now, does that cover the others as well, the Con Ed and that's all of them, right?
That was the motion for all the contracts.
So move to, the next discussion then is H.
So, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this item is relative to the land on Queen Anne that was originally allocated for a pet burial ground. That allocation or designation was rescinded at the Springtown meeting, and I've been able to confirm that the Cemetery Commission did, at a meeting in June, turn it back over to the Board of Selectmen. The reason why you don't have anything in your packet is the property card hasn't changed yet, so I'm actually working with the Board of Assessors to change that over so that it reads Howard Board of Selectmen rather than Howard Cemetery Commission. Beyond that, the, the options that the board has are fairly simple under procurement. You can do proposals to. Leave the land idle. So this evening, I'd be looking for some direction from the board as to what options, if any, you'd like staff to track down.
I ask this to be brought up on this agenda because I wanted to confirm the fact that we voted at town meeting to return this land to the Board of Selectmen, but I asked Joe just to list what our options are, and we don't need to make a decision tonight, we can take it home and, and discuss it. But I know there's been some interest in other departments, why department occasionally listed some interest in, in this land, but do we want to sell it? Don?
This, Mr. Chair, this is me speaking as the liaison of the Real Estate and Open Space Committee. I get where we're at, but I'd kind of like to have it referred back to them so that they could give us the range of possibilities that they think are reasonable, and then we can decide what we want to do relative to a warrant. I will say, if we want to sell it, then we need to roll into town meeting with an RFP already issued and real numbers already in front of town meeting. I will never support going to the town meeting and say, just trust us.
You're absolutely right, and we have to have an idea how we, how we use the funds as well. But, and that's a good idea to bring it back to, refer to another committee. Michael and then Leo?
I'll yield to Leo and then I'll speak.
Well, it's no secret that I'm absolutely opposed to the town selling these lots.
It's no secret.
No secret at all. And I'll certainly speak against selling them at town meeting if you people so desire to put them up for sale at town meeting. There's a lot of things that I want you people to consider when you're thinking about these lots. Queen Anne Road is already a minor highway in this town. It's already overly congested with contractors, trucks. It is an industrial zoned road, and there are some on both ends, essential areas, but it's already heavily trafficked with a lot of industrial type of equipment. And I think that the town, and I've said this on town meeting and I'll say it here, I think it's ridiculous when the town turns around and by commission or through other development and planning tools says to large developed areas where you have to set aside a certain amount of land for open space or a certain amount of land to offset what you're doing here in the development, and now here we have the town in that same predicament. Who better to hold these vacant lots than the town of Howard? It doesn't cost us anything other than, you could sit here and argue all day long of the revenue loss you're going to have, but quite frankly, comparable lot across the street privately owned pays $4,000 a year in property taxes. So for $4,000 a year in property taxes, I as one multiple taxpayer in this town would rather let it sit vacant. And then the other thing is, we don't know what the future's going to bring this town. And I pass, and I hope to pass on my, my land that I own here to my daughter and I'm sure my grandchildren, there will be things that will come up that this town will require land for, industrial zone land for. And I will make my point by saying that if I stood before this board 25 years ago, which is not a long time, and I held up, and I don't have my cellphone with me, but I held up a flip phone and I told the board that in 25 years, every single person is going to have one of these on their side, you'd look at me like I had two heads and you wouldn't know what I was talking about. So that's what I'm asking you to think about in the future of this town. We own some industrial zone land on a very nice paved road, it's a beautiful community down there, and there's no reason why we shouldn't just let it sit there and wait. For an example, we are going to have airwaves, what do they call that when they, the way your cellphone works now?
Cell towers.
Not just cell towers for cellphones.
Radio waves.
But, but for your internet service. We have, we have right now a, a line, the glass fiber line going down to Cape, and there's no reason why this town shouldn't be looking at tapping into that, putting a tower up and providing all the residents of this town with internet access. Not free internet access, but internet access that is reasonable to the taxpayers. Just like when we build a harbor and we give taxpayers reasonable access to the harbor, or a golf course and we give them reasonable access to play golf. Well, the town should be looking at putting up a tower to give this internet access to the community so we can cut the cable. Might sound silly now, but you know what, in five years from now, there's not going to be any cable TV. Everything is going to be through the internet, you guys know that as well as I do. All right? There could be a satellite communication thing there. It's an industrial zone piece of land, it's worth way too much for us to keep than it is for us to sell for a measly few hundred thousand dollars. So yet again, another landscaper or another dump trucks can be driving up and down that already heavily trafficked road. Thank you.
Leo, just a couple of comments, thank you, thank you for that. The, in terms of the cell tower, that was actually a discussion that we had with an open Cape Committee that we had two years. open Cape Committee that we had two years ago. Scott Tunsley was participating in that possible site. The reason that I wanted to discuss this is that, that's, that's one strong view of the area. I wanted to open it up at town meeting, find a forum to open up for all discussions. We've had, you know, real estate and open space is open, as listed as open space, for instance, there's a tie-in to other open spaces, other criteria. I think this should be part of that overall discussion. Your view may win out, that we should absolutely, but I hate to have that go forward without any discussion. Now, Ed?
Yeah, I think, you know, I think to further the discussion along, I know, in, depending on how the, the land was, was acquired, if it's, if it's put up for sale, there may be certain requirements on what, or limitations on what can be done with the proceeds. We oughta know that before we move ahead with any discussion. And then the simple, having the simple procedure, I know, you know, we can lease or sell it, but are there steps where it has to be made available to, before we go out on the open market, that it can be made available to town agencies, to other public agencies? I know in equipment, when we surplus those items, we're required to do that process. Are we required to do that for this, of these pieces of land? But, you know, it's not a, it's not a simple discussion of, oh, let's sell it, or let's not sell it, or let's lease it or not sell it. There's a lot of issues that need to be discussed and a lot of information gathered.
Michael?
I think since town meeting voted down the pet cemetery, nobody has come forward with any ideas. And personally, I think we have enough to do. I, why would we even explore this at this point with nobody coming forward? We've now talked and, and held up tearing down the East Howard Fire Department. Bank Street Fire Department was voted to demolish and sell. We haven't done anything with that yet. So if we're just looking for things to do, I would say that we have plenty to do.
Mr. Chair? Don?
I'm not suggesting that we sell it. I said if we get to that point, we really should know what the deal is, you know, before we get authority to do something as carte blanche. Personally, I would prefer it to go back to Rio so that they can assess the relative use possibilities. I don't know, the water department, maybe the highway department. Somebody might have a municipal use, but we're not really geared to assessing that. I think we should just refer to the people who have as their charge how we use our properties.
And I would, I would like to do that, and we don't need to have a big decision. I would go back to real estate and open space. Leo, that gives you a format to plead your case with them as well. Link?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to advise the board that at the request of the cemetery administrator and her commission, we moved the gazebo. That was the Green Cemetery, I believe, was placed in the center of that. We also had to do some repairs to it. I wanted you to know that the cemetery department still has jurisdiction over that.
Okay. Michael, you?
It's just a follow-up question to that. Did they pay us the $4,000 for that, have gone through that process?
Not to my knowledge.
And I, I believe that the last time we had this conversation, it was supposed to come back to us.
Will come back and transfer, yeah.
So maybe we can get to the bottom of how that moved, and we had, the town hasn't been paid back for it?
We'll follow up on it.
Mr. Chair, can I move that we refer the matter to the Real Estate and Open Space Committee?
Second.
They may not take any action for years, as far as we know, but at least it goes back to them. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the next item, I, is procurement update, and as I started mentioning when we discussed, for whatever reason, we've fallen behind in, in our procurement. We've had town meeting votes to get things done, and I wanna ask Chris and Joe and Kevin, Joe and Kevin has been there, Griffin- Items that we need to go out on bid for, so we could get a list and prioritize those and work through this. And that's what we're, and Joe, I'll turn this over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, an apology. The 11-by-17 billboard that you now have in front of you was supposed to have been delivered electronically. I believe the one you have in your packet was reduced to 811, but this is a spreadsheet that Griffin and I were working on as late as Friday afternoon. And what we've tried to capture here, believe it or not, there are 40 projects that are listed here. These are the projects that we've been made aware of since we began as a procurement team in June. Now, some of those include projects that we became aware of through second-hand conversation or information. So what you see in front of you are procurement projects that are ongoing, procurement projects that we became aware of through related articles, through community preservation or straight warrant articles. But what you don't see here would be any operational or capital procurements. So in other words, straight operational budget line item procurements or capital items. What we tried to do, if you draw your attention over to the status column, we're trying to demonstrate the different status categories of in-process, on hold, no information provided, ongoing, completed, to the board, out for bid, council review. You know, those are pretty much the standard status that we've been able to come up with. The one that says no information provided, that's information that we became aware of, we being Griffin and I, through either a comment that was made or in reviewing the, the warrant booklets for the last two fiscal years. The other thing I'll draw your attention to is if you look in the FY column, which is the third from the left, we've got projects that go back to fiscal year 2018. And again, Griffin and I began this process in June of this calendar year. So last fiscal year, the last month, but really since fiscal year 2020 started.
Thank you, Joe. Now, again, I asked Joe to present this, and Joe, are these in your order of priority, or how are they listed?
No, if I remember correctly, we sorted these by staff lead's last name.
Okay. So the discussion that, maybe we need to come back to the agenda item, what I was looking for as a follow-up, is I, from Joe and Griffin's side, is from the priority, you know, like, you wanna get to the low-hanging fruit first, probably, try and box them through this. And then from the board are the items that we feel are higher priorities so we can move ahead. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanna get to something clear, though, because this, I don't think this is the entire magnitude of things that we have to contract for. My question is, does this include the exempt contracts, like engineering contracts that may be out there? I think there's one potentially going on the harbors right now. That's workload.
Yeah, we do have some engineering contracts that are on there. So we didn't look at it from a standpoint of whether or not it was exempt from parameters of 30B or 149. It's really, what are we working on? So if you look at the very top of the sheet, that first item there is actually an engineering project. Ironically, that's one that, a discussion of that led to this entire matrix being created and discussed. It's a subset of a CBC project, but we've tried to capture just about everything we're working on, we being Griffin and I.
So this is all-
And, Don, I, and my, my, my ask of this was, based on our meeting, you know, voted a couple weeks ago on 25, and no exempt, that they did not make a distinction on exempt or non-exempt going forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And that's kind of what I was trying to get at here, because if this is an all-in list, that's fine, because, doesn't matter, these folks, it's workload. They need to know where, what's their first priority and what's their last, or recommend it.
And again, if I could just remind the board that, as it turned out, I believe it, and again, simply ran out of time on Friday, but there are 40 projects listed there. This is by no means an exhaustive list. And again, it does not include any procurements that may be occurring because of operational line item standard procurements or capital. It was warrant articles and community preservation.
Okay, other comments? Michael or Don?
Again, I'm looking, I hate to beat a dead horse here, but I'm not seeing any engineering for the harbors. Are they not doing anything?
Engineering for harbors?
Yeah, there's absolutely nothing out there.
I believe that's a reference to Allen Harbor rehabilitation. The administrator has that.
Okay, but we gonna see it?
I don't know the status of it yet.
Still workload.
Well, it is, but that's the purpose of this, is be sure we, we can't do, we can't do all this at once. I'm trying to get, I'm trying to figure out a way to, we are trying to figure out a way to step through this.
Mr. Chairman, I apologize. That particular project is on the list.
Is on here.
I see it. If you work up from the, if you can find-
Survey Services, Allen Harbor Rehabilitation.
So that Allen Harbor Rehabilitation project-
About a quarter of the way up.
Yeah, I get it.
We had sent it for council review. The administrator's working on it now.
Didn't identify it was the harbor. Thank you.
I guess my question really would be for the town administrator, but I appreciate you trying to get to the bottom of this, Larry, and prioritize. We don't know the importance of each one of these to the department heads that are listed on here, you know, and we have other things going on, like employees that we desp, that they're having to go through. And again, our town administrator hasn't been with us the last three out of four weeks. I guess I'd like to understand, myself, I'd like to understand how we got here. And, and just to continue with the negative, I, we've had an employee, one of our major employees in the office, out seven months. I kinda know how we got here, but the general public doesn't know how we got here. And at some point, the board has to address it, Larry. We can, we can get lists and charts and pile more work like we did tonight on Joe and Ryder with the contracts for CIVAC, that we started to look in May, but, and then again in September, but then tonight, we got presented with them and had to vote on them by the 15th. I'm asking you to put a meeting together, whether it's public, however it is, to figure out how we're getting to this position-
Right.
And still voting more work for people to do.
I agree with that point, Michael. Well, I'm trying to do, and, and I agree, we have to work at that. Reason I was going in this tact is, is I feel, I feel that it's, the better tact is rather than try to agree at once and say where it holds, just, just figure out a way to work away out of it. And to do that is to, and I, and as I said before, I asked Joe to go back with the department heads, and they take their first crack at prioritizing, and we have different, at least we know. And then what I've asked is, give us a schedule that we can meet to start working and getting out of this. I take your first point. We have to do that. Second point is, we, we have to figure out, and we have to have an organized way to get out of this and get these underway, because we have money that's been approved by town meetings that we haven't, and projects that we have to move forward on, and we need to.
Just to, just to point my, my question, and it really is gonna be through you, I guess, through the assistant town administrator, back to our chief procurement officer, our town administrator. How did we get here? And how does he suggest, as the person that makes the top salary for the town, how we get out of this? Rather than pile more work on two people that have basically just started. So that meeting, you meet with them on Wednesday mornings, it'd be great to have an idea how, how he thinks we're gonna get out of this.
And, and, and we'll follow up with that. I just wanna reiterate, my purpose of pushing this was not to pile more work on, it was to get a way to, to actually ease the work and walk through it. Don?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. And actually, I was going to say, thank you, Mr. Chair, because this is the first time I've seen this in one place. It's kind of what I was hoping to see all along. It's like, what's our workload and what comes first, what comes next? But I do agree with Michael, that now that it's been put down on a piece of paper, it's all-inclusive, that it's really on the town administrator to set the priorities, come back with a recommendation of this goes first, this goes second, and then we can have a discussion, too, about, you know, why we're so backlogged to where we are. But the first thing is, if he's the manager, he's not just the chief procurement officer, he's the, the person that we set policy for and he executes. So I mean, it basically, the buck stops with him, and I, I think it's unfair to make the assistant town administrator create priorities amongst this list when it's really the town administrator who has to do that. He has to actually slog his way through some of these things if he's delegated the responsibility of putting the bids out. But we need to know what management says is our priority list.
I would only add that I wanna very much thank Joe and Griffin for putting this together. This is some work.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We've, we've had the framework for it since we started, so it was helpful to us to actually rebuild it, and it's a work in progress for us, and, and I would still ask that we, we be allowed to give updates on a regular basis so that through you, to the town, people are aware of what we're doing.
Yeah, well, Ed?
Yeah, and I look- ... passed by town meeting, and our priority of our town meeting voters, and it isn't, it isn't really that we're gonna, we should set, okay, we're gonna work on this one, and those, and this one's gonna have to wait until after it's done, and so, all of these need to move ahead at the same time. And, and we have department heads in each department who are responsible for working with the town administration, legal, finance, to push these, engineering, to push these things ahead, all at the same time, because, you know, we're not gonna wait until the, fire station is finished to begin working on the restroom for Sand Pond. I mean, they're totally unrelated.
We have limited staff is my only issue with that, Ed.
So, you know.
Joe has a comment and Don?
Thank you, and I, and I appreciate comments from previous speaker. What I wanna emphasize is that any number of the projects that you see that are in process or have been completed, it's because of the partnership that we've had with the appropriate department heads. These are folks that have taken the initiative. They've done a lot of the, the groundwork and presented to us. If you look at the ones at the bottom, again, I don't know why I chose to sort by lead last name, but Lieutenant Tillsley's projects are all there at the bottom and all completed. And that's in large part because of his efforts to get it in front of Griffin and I, as well as any number of the department heads you see there, as well as the department head in the audience that we might hear from later on tonight. How's that for a spoiler?
Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I understand what Mr. McManus is saying here, except that nobody's suggesting you finish one and you start another, but is the only person up here other than the assistant town administrator has actually issued bids. You can't contemporaneously put together 10 bids. There's gotta be a sequence to them. They have different opening dates. They're not all gonna happen the same day, and the format of them is different. An engineering contract isn't the same as a 30B contract, so they all gotta be done correctly. They're all gotta be on the right formats. And no one's suggesting, sit back, wait for the clock to lapse on project one, and then we'll start, after they finish building project one, we'll do two. But it really is a gargantuan task to be able to set these bids up, and they can't be done on the same day.
I'm only recognizing the staff we have trying to work away.
And, and I think they, they do a very good job of, of keeping all of the projects moving forward. You know, they, they don't all happen at once, and God knows, we probably couldn't put up with all the people that would be in town doing them if they all happened at once. They all get done, and, you know, I, I understand we have a limited number of staff, but in my business, you know, I manage, right now, I'm managing probably 15 different clients and projects going on, and they all move ahead.
Okay, there's not much more we can do on this. We'll, we'll continue to thank you, Joe and Griffin. The main thing that, that this has accomplished, though, is the list of what we know now has to be done, that I wasn't aware of until we, not, not until we ask questions and get this going.
Thank you.
So we'll, we'll get this on, and we'll try to move through it. And Michael, to your point, we'll explore it, yeah, we'll get, we'll get, get the other side going. Okay. Next one item is the DPW OSHA compliance. Link, you, we should speak to this.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Although you didn't ask, I'm gonna offer this up, that I think Joe and Griff have been doing a great job. They've been as responsive as possible, and a great deal of stuff that you're not seeing is stuff that we end up having to bid to do. And, and they've been, been working quite cooperatively with us, which is immensely appreciated. And, and they've been, been working quite cooperatively with us, which is immensely appreciated. I'm here this evening to brief the board on a new law that affects every, every public sector employee in the Commonwealth. To let you know what the DPW has been doing to address it, offer up a possible solution. And then probably most important, I have two experts that are in the room brief you and let you know. I have Marina Brock, a former, I believe retired, former health and safety officer with Barnstable County Health Department, current, um, Mass Maritime Professor and a House resident. And I have Sean Libby, former Master Chief in the service with thirty years of CB experience under his belt. She's going to take exception to me calling him expert, but know that he is. On March ninth, two thousand and eighteen, Governor Baker signed a new law that amended the OSHA standards. That law was postponed, the adoption of it was postponed until this past February. Where, and it essentially placed all public sector workers, not just DPW, fire, police, office people, everybody, under the same standards that all private sector workers have been under for twenty or thirty years. In an attempt to get ahead of the curve, I decided we were going to do two things. We were going to participate in this pilot project that Marina is heading up, called the Barnstable County Pilot Project. And that is a group of four or five towns, along with MIA, um, Department of Labor Standards, DLS, industrial accidents. These are people that all come together at these tables with a mission of trying to develop a sustainable model that could be used in other municipalities in the state. Second, um, I recently completed, along with four of my senior managers in the department, a thirty-hour OSHA class, which is a lifetime credential. That class essentially taught us how much we don't know. It is a broad-based class that gives you a smothering of everything we should be doing and enough to know a hazard when you see it and so forth, but in no way qualifies anyone as a competent person or a specialist in that. Uh, this was, I view this as kind of the starting point to this process, was understanding the magnitude of the problem. And that, uh, and that class certainly provided that for us. I thought of a possible solution to help us with this is being able to have Sean assist me in this endeavor. And, and it's kind of a two-fold endeavor that I believe the objective is here. And it's to go from how we have done things in the past as a training model only, where you just have trainings and then you hope for the best, to kind of a sustainable culture of safety, where safety is no longer an afterthought when you have a near miss or an accident or incident that's reported, but something is built into the process. I've always been about, let's get it done, you know, let's get it done most efficiently and effectively for the taxpayer, where safety has come as an afterthought. Taking all of the, taking these courses and being exposed to this, I've really changed my, my thought train to, my responsibility, yes, is to get it done and fall, and, and provide high-quality service, but is also to make sure that everybody goes home intact at the end of their shift. With that in mind, there's nobody under the DPW umbrella that understands safety better than Mr. Libby. With thirty years in the military as a Master Chief, he, he understands this more than anybody. He might take exception to it, but, uh, he, he certainly does. He doesn't have the time. He's spread very, very thin. Uh, he has participated with me in the roundtable exercises, but other than that, we really haven't been able to tackle this in any meaningful way. A possible solution would be to take the custodial unit of, he has six full, I think, six employees in that he manages off of his plate. I think we could do that by possibly hiring a custodial foreman in that position. Custodial foreman would have an act of all being able to backfill when people are on vacation and out sick and so forth. Where now we are essentially forced to cover a lot of that with overtime. Also, having a custodial foreman would allow that person to have some flexibility in their schedule, to check on abilities at different hours, and probably get into some underserved areas of the town. That unit is rather, rather thin as well. Requested the same position last year in the EOS during the budget process, and it was removed, you know, very early on in the budget process. I bring it to your attention before we even have essentially entered the budget process. To do that is free up some of Sean's time to tackle this in a, in a meaningful way. And with that, I, I'd appreciate if you'd allow Marina Brock to come talk a little more in depth about the, what we're facing, and then.
Sure, please. I had a preview of this at the MMA conference a couple of years ago.
I'm Marina Brock, and I actually am not retired. The county's hired me on. I worked for the Barnstable Health Department, Health Environmental in, in, in EHS capacity, which is Environmental Health and Safety, for about thirty years. I got hired by Mass Maritime as an assistant professor in emergency management and safety. And so, I do, in fact, we're developing and evolving a safety program, a curriculum there. Barnstable County still hires me on contract to do the work relative to kind of implementing municipal OSHA structure and training. I, you know, I could talk to you for thirty hours. I could talk to you for a lot longer, so I'm not sure how you want to go. I, I've been working with Harwich and with Link for many years before I actually left the county to go onto contract and go to Mass Maritime. He has been wonderful about training. What do you, what would you like to know? Personally, I've worked in the municipal sector in safety for thirty years. So, I've seen you guys, I've seen facilities, I've seen accidents, I've seen problems.
So, as part of your support then, training and record-keeping that's required is to, uh.
It's so much more complex than, than, it's much more complex. But, um, let me, Link kind of had it wrong. Municipal sector, especially in Massachusetts, no, he's awesome, but he had it wrong. Essentially, in Massachusetts, public sector has been indemnified from complying to any, any relative framework of OSHA since nineteen seventy, when the OSHA Act passed. The OSHA Act doesn't cover public sector entities, they couldn't obtain bipartisan support to do that. It was expected of the states at that time to meet the minimum standards of worker protection for municipal workers and state workers. Massachusetts never has, ever. And so, for fifty years, we've basically not been complying to any of the minimum standards of OSHA, where this gentleman, Mr. McManus, said he has a business, you have to comply to every standard of OSHA relative to your worker safety. The municipal sector has been exempt from that. Only recently, the governor made a, a proclamation to say, we are going to comply to the minimum standards of federal OSHA as administered by Department of Labor Standards. And it's because we're actually upside down on workman's comp. So, we are now, it is getting too costly to not protect municipal workers than to actually protect them. And so, that was one of the reasons the mandate came down. I've been in municipal sectors all over Massachusetts, I've been training, I've been inspecting, I've been auditing. And in many structures, it is third world, it is third world relative to the types of facilities, especially in the DPW and public utility sector, which is why we're doing the pu, public Barnstable County Roundtable Project. And so, um, and also, Link has it a little wrong. We have nine towns that voluntary, voluntarily participated in this to develop and evolve a self, a safety management structure. And that's what we're trying to do. So, in answer to your question, yes, I train. I'm an authorized OSHA outreach trainer for General Industry. I have a master's degree in occupational health and safety engineering. I, you know, I, I'm working with them to do the right thing, and they're doing the right thing. And it's, it's a struggle. It really is a struggle, not only for Harwich, but for many of the towns, so.
Thank you. I, I guess I have some more questions for, uh, Link on this. All right?
It's up to the chairman, obviously.
I think I've everything, I get a lot right, but he's, he's much more gentle than I would be. I'm not as filtered and kind.
I'm going to leave that discussion alone, Link. Are you, uh, working with the water department on this? Because they obviously follow under the same OSHA requirements.
We have not. We did initially invited a couple of departments. Kind of what started this for me is, uh, we received, after the town ended up having three incidents, we received a letter, or I received a letter from DLS, um, saying they needed an investigation about how these things do, occurred and what we were doing to stop those. As I've been, um, working with Marina for twenty-plus years, I called her and said, um, what is this? Why are we getting this? And what should we do? And she assisted me through that process. And as we worked through that, she then convinced me of the merit to join the Barnstable Roundtable, which would help us get a head start on, on this.
In terms of manpower, would it make sense to have a discussion with the water department, so you can share a person or work that out?
I, to, to, I have not had any discussions with Dan of such. But know that this, this new, and it's not a new law, it was an amendment to an existing law, um, it covers everyone. So, golf, water, fire, police, everyone. It, the reason we focused on DPW is because we typically do the most dangerous work. And, um, there's been fatalities. Actually, uh, we had Representative Whalen speaking to my trade association last Thursday. And he, he, I believe, said, in the last five years, every single year, there's been a municipal, uh, DPW death Commonwealth each and every year.
No, I, I agree with all that. Certainly, uh, I'm not surprised that they don't follow the same rules as, uh, private industry. But. My question is not, not that I don't recognize the problem, is that, just want to be sure we combine our best we can. I know I, I heard this at MMA beside Alan Thompson, so I know he was taken back to the water department, that we, they needed to do something. That's my only request, is you touch base with them and see what they're doing.
Certainly.
And your request for a, uh, to help out is, is your intent to bring that to town meeting in the spring to get that person?
My intent was to just start a dialogue this evening, to make you aware of the change in law, the magnitude of the problem, which I've done a poor job of discussing. To just start the dialogue, honestly. It was nothing I think was going to be fixed tonight, to, you know, next month or anything, certainly. I knew this was coming, because the law was on the books. They had postponed it several times. I think twice it got postponed. And then this past February became actual law. So, we are working towards this, is, and a lot of municipalities are in the same boat. I have to say, the town of Dennis is leaps and bounds in leading the charge on this. And they have more resources than, than we have, quite frankly.
Well. Be as it may, we need to worry about ourselves, right? I'm just intent that we, uh, we, we do this the whole town, bringing the water department as well, at least for the discussion.
Uh, and, and the golf department, and any other department that wants to participate. Because, again, this is, I, I know I'm here representing DPW, but this is not just isolated to DPW. It, this is, this, this affects all municipal employees.
Thank you. Now, Michael, you have a comment question?
I guess the question I have, uh, thank you for the memo, and thank you for your presentation, and obviously thank Sean Libby for all that he does. This is a two-part, what's that? Well, this is, let me finish. This is a two-part request, correct? You're looking for a foreman for your maintenance division to lighten Sean's load, right?
Yes, sir.
And we're looking for the OSHA compliance person as part of that.
Let me, um, that's probably where the gentleman behind me is going.
All right.
I, I was saying that if we hired a custodial foreman, that would take about thirty percent off of his plate.
Sean's load.
Of Sean's plate, and then Sean could, uh, help a day or two days a week concentrate his efforts towards safety. The right thing to do, and I think this is probably where Mr. Libby's going, would be to hire a compliance officer. The town, the only town I'm aware that has done so is the town of Barnstable. And they, they hired a, a person, actually, they, um, did away with one of their engineering, um, staff members and hired a safety officer. That safety officer has been in both the thirty-hour train, thirty-hour OSHA training with us, along with the roundtable exercise. I did bring this to the administrator, and, um, you know, like I said, it got no traction for a custodial foreman. I brought the fact that, uh, you know, the right thing to do would be hire a compliance officer for the whole town. And he said in his discussions with the, um, various administrator group, that nobody was going down that path. Was, was more or less the feedback I, I got from the administrator. So, I thought this was kind of a, um, certainly not a panacea, but I thought it was kind of two birds with one stone, where we could make, uh, make some headway towards safety in a meaningful way and improve, improve custodial services. I think he wants to.
I'll, I'll have a follow-up question, I'm sure, but I'll yield to Sean.
Sean, well, Ed, you have a question. Sean first, and then.
I've already had this discussion with Link, so I'm not really disagreeing with him, but I am disagreeing in public. And it goes right along with what he's saying, so he started to stult some of my words. But if the town had the climate, and I really don't think we do, to hire an additional person, that person should be a certified safety professional. It should not be somebody that was around safety for thirty years and kind of got some of them. Hurt and they stayed on the job. So, I understand safety, but I'm no, by no means a professional. It's definitely somebody like Marina. So, that's if we had the funds. If we don't have the funds, which is what I think where we're at, I had an alternate solution is, I, I need to free up some time. Right now, I supervise the custodians. I would love to see the custodians be supervised by the buildings that they support. That way, the department heads could say on the spot, this wasn't done, this needs to be done, I need you here this day. You're doing this wrong, you're doing this right. They'd be able to give immediate feedback, rather than having it wait a couple of days, which is the case right now, because I just don't have the time. Filling those schedules, it does take up about thirty percent of my time. And, and that's difficult, because I was hired to do facilities management. And I'm spending a lot of time with, with this, and now it's safety on top of it. Nothing's going to get done to the level it needs to get done if we keep piling more duties on top of people. The other thing I wanted to say is, uh, if the town was to hire somebody, this should be a position for the whole town. It's not just DPW, it is the water department, it is golf, it's admin, believe it or not. It's about how to, you know, fill your filing cabinet so it doesn't fall on top of you and you lose that administrative person for a couple of months. So, it's, it's a town issue, and it's not something that can be piecemealed. You've got to have one person that's looking at everything, and it's strictly administrative in the beginning. That's documenting all the training, it's documenting, uh, any kind of programs, it's enhancing awareness. And then, you can go out and do inspections and, and find other areas that can be improved upon. Safety is constant improvement, it's everybody's responsibility, everybody knows that, but it's not documented. And in the world of government, if it's not documented, it's not done.
I would just, uh, quickly add that, uh, it, it, it starts with us, the board of selectmen. We have to set that safety is important to us, and then it runs down through town administrator and all the town departments and staff. So, it's not, we're not bystanders on this, and so have a discussion, we're, have to be an active part of making this happen. And I think that's why we're having a discussion tonight, of how we make it go. Michael, and then Ed?
If I can finish. Thank you very much, Sean. And I wouldn't say, uh, it starts with the board of selectmen, because I think we could do it. But IT, five years in a row, has been a priority. And I think we're still struggling with IT, and we still haven't finished that position. I guess have we explored, uh, I, I'm definitely going to take the notes, Sean, on the relieving your time and not being in charge of the maintenance part of that. And, and I, and I was going to ask Link, uh, or, or through Chris, to let us know how many unfilled positions you have right now. Because as we get into the budget season, things that are, are unfilled, I, I believe that that's going to be a topic of conversation, where we can reallocate people if we have to reallocate people. On this piece, on the OSHA, has it been explored at all on the county level? For the county to hire a safety officer that can be shared with the towns with some of the. For the county to hire a safety officer that can be shared with the towns with some of the money that we pay the county, and I think Mr. Kakounis could probably elaborate on this, but we, uh...
I'm not a politician, I'm keeping my mouth...
Mr., sure, Mr. Kakounis, if he wanted to, could elaborate. We pay a, we pay a fair amount of, well, and, and we don't need to really get, dive into the weeds on this. We pay a fair amount of money to the county, and we don't use the resources and, and that money that is available to us. And I know, year after year after year, we talk about it, and year after year, we don't. So on the county level, it is, if it's important to the county and the county is paying you, why doesn't the county have a person? So I, I'll be asking for that as we, as we go forward with this. But certainly, Sean, on the maintenance side, and getting you some relief, if there's any room in Link's budget. Because as far as hiring a new $66,000 a year person plus benefits, I can't support that, given the five-year forecast that we got the other day showing a $2.7 million deficit five years out. Because we're just going to lay them off. We're going to do the same thing we did in 2005. We're going to [inaudible] lay them off.
Link, and then Ed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The county was pretty smart, although Marina left or retired, I'm not really sure which, she left. They immediately put her on per diem to do just this, this health and safety aspect, to assist the towns. And I believe, was it the county or Maya that just funded the 30?
Oh, you're right. Maya just spent about $10,000 to do the training for, and they're sponsoring the [inaudible]. So they're, they're already...
Be sure to use the mic.
Sure, I'm sorry.
Barnstable County, Barnstable County actually has me on per diem to do work for the, the towns. I also just want to go on record saying I couldn't respect these guys more, Sean and, and Link. So, I mean, I, if I felt like I was disparaging them, not at all. In fact, I think they minimize when I think they do so much work, and they do work that's really unrecognized, and they're, they're doing a good job with what they have. But in any case, Barnstable County, yeah, we do. The problem with funding a safety officer for the county, it's, it's, uh, it's, it's not that it's not feasible, but what would a countywide safety officer do with 15 towns? And how, how effective would that be? It would be difficult to administer. If you actually really, and I love what Mr. Ballantyne said, safety should come from you down, and it should come from within town. It should come from admin all the way down, and it should come from line all the way up. And a, a regional facilitator isn't going to happen, just not going to happen on that level. It has to come from within the town. Yeah.
Thank you. Now, Mike, would you have a follow-up, or...
Yeah, the only follow-up to that would be, I believe there's enough money where the, the county could probably hire a staff, not just one person, one safety officer, or maybe they could contribute. But I do believe, again, we contribute a lot of money to the county that we don't spend. And we, as a board, need to start figuring out how to get some of that back, whether we pay another position and then use that money for a safety officer. But I believe thinking outside the box at this point, and sharing even with one other town would be beneficial to this town.
Leo, then I go ahead.
Well, I think Selectman McCaskill hit the nail on the head. The only thing I'm going to warn you is, don't wait for the current possible county government, the way it's, things that they're going through to step up and assist you. My suggestion to you would be, and I know you have a lot on your plate, and here's going to be one more, but I'm sorry, you're going to have to do it, is to partner with some neighboring towns. Because once again, I'm not sure if Harwich needs a five-day-a-week safety officer. I'm sure out of the gate, yes, they're going to be spending a lot of time. But once we get all the different departments up to speed, even that workload can be done, as, as Link said, could be done maybe one or two days a week. And so if we were to partner with Barns, uh, Brewster, Orleans, and maybe Eastham or something like that, one of the, or Chatham, and take that to the county and say, hey, listen, this is what we want, and we want you people to fulfill that. Because as Marina said, I, I don't anticipate the county stepping up and having one person handle all 15 towns anyhow. That's not going to benefit anybody. But unfortunately, you guys are going to have to take the bull by the horns on this one and be the leaders. And I would suggest you look at that. I think that Link's suggestion is, is great, but I kind of see that as almost a Band-Aid and a finale kind of answer. And I'm a little concerned with Mr. McCaskill's predictions too, in the future with hiring someone new. But, uh, I, you know, I think this needs to be looked into, and I, I thank Link for bringing it forward, because we need to discuss it before now in the next budget cycle.
It's a great start. Ed, and then Don.
Well, you know, I just wanted to indicate my support for establishing a, a safety program and, and somebody to administer it in the town, and whether that comes in the form of somebody for two towns or three towns, or, or four, I mean, you know, the four, Orleans, Chatham, Brewster, and Harwich have been cooperating for years with the Pleasant Bay Alliance. Maybe we can cooperate on a, a safety officer. The other issue is, I agree that Sean needs, uh, just put more of his time into the construction end of the, the facilities maintenance. You know, I know in the past, uh, the, the maintenance staffs of the different, uh, buildings were administered by the people who ran the buildings, and I'm not sure that's not, didn't work better in some ways. But that, that's, that's, that's also a possibility to, to look at.
Okay, Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, I, I'm an alum, alumnus of the federal government, and no one was better at exempting itself from its own regulations than we were, for the civilian side, Sean. No, the civilian side just ignored it. So, having said that, I mean, it's, the safety is very important, and it's about time that they start enforcing things. It, it's not like the government workers weren't real people. And the thing that I wanted to, been on here is... Anything to add, anybody, to a budget from here on forward, I want to go back to the way the charter said to do it, that we vote on a staffing plan, and it had, as practice, we had an article funded whatever... We can spend nearly $70 million in four minutes. But when it's out there in a specific article, it gets aired about the, uh, the necessity for doing it, and you make your case, it gets voted in front of your, when there's a good case, it always gets voted. Chief back there knows that. That's how we used to add people. When you start putting them into the budget, it's really difficult for the average citizen to feel, because it's intimidating. They feel like, I don't want to go up to the mic and say, I'd like to amend the budget and take out this line item. They're not even going to notice it, because nobody, it, it's so big, it's beyond everybody. So all I'm saying is, in general, and we all know this, the smaller the item, the bigger the discussion at town meeting. We can beat to death spending $5,000, even as we spend no time discussing about $70 million. So I, I would really, this and anything else, it should be done by a staffing plan, which shows an additional staff, and a, a warrant article that shows what that cost. And by the way, it should have benefits in probably mid-step. It's us going bankrupt because we do it, the first step with no benefits, and then it's a loser. You can't even afford it in the second year. But that's my two cents. We, we need to go back so that the public actually knows what they're doing.
I thank you for your presentations. You said we don't need to take any action tonight. I think what we'll ask you is go back and look at, you know, the entire, the town in its entirety. We'll look at other towns, see if we can, uh, you know, find some people willing to partner with us. And I take Don's point. A few years ago, we, we started moving staffs back to the budget. And at the time, the interest was to, uh, try to maintain the overall budget, so it wasn't be added. But we need to look at that again. Obviously, it's failed. Any other comments? If not, we'll move on. Thanks again, Marina, for being here, and as usual, Sean. I won't label you as the expert, Dan. Does that make you, that, you're happy if we do that?
I like that.
Okay, Link?
He certainly looked and spoke the part, though, didn't he?
No, don't draw me into it. I already said that.
Thank, thank you.
Okay, moving on to contracts. Joe, I'll leave these two items to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and to pick up on the expertise that was just mentioned relative to Mr. Libby, these are the two contracts that the board had considered before, that Sean and I have been working on for RISE Engineering's work on green communities for equipment relative to Brooks Library. The two contracts you have, the first one there for auxiliary equipment, this had been co-mingled with the second one for the emergency management system, and the amount was over the $100,000. We did vet that with counsel. What you're being asked to approve tonight is the auxiliary equipment by itself. However, if you recall the discussion regarding Mass General Laws, Chapter 25A, Section 14, auxiliary equipment actually more matches up with the pumps contract you had done before. But if you add those two together, it's well below the $100,000 threshold. So it can stand by itself. It is presented to you this evening by itself. I did not have a, a chance to get it to the accountant for her signature, but I did advise her of these two contracts. And the other thing I've been remiss on, if you approve these two contracts, you will have approved five altogether. The total cost to the taxpayers in the town of Harwich for all five is $13,457. The amounts that you see within the RISE Engineering are a function of RISE's cost as well as having to do with Kate Life Compact and Green Communities. So really, each of these projects comes in at an average of under $3,500 as far as total cost to the town per project. So I am asking that the board approve both of the contracts that you have, both items A and B.
All right, Ed?
Mr. Chair, I'd move that we approve a contract for the auxiliary equipment controls in the amount of $50,039, and the Brooks Tree Library Emergency Energy Management System in the amount, proposal, the amount of $53,525.
With a signature by the board of selectmen.
Okay.
Okay, we'll take that, Dan. Is there a second to that?
A second for discussion.
Okay, second is Michael.
So I appreciate you pointing out, first of all, I appreciate all the work Sean's done, and I have heard a little bit of feedback around town about the fact that this has taken so long to get approved. And I just wanted to explain myself, we've been asking for contracts to come to us in, in a form for, I don't know, the four years I've been on, and I think I've probably gotten four complete contracts out of 400. Again, tonight, before us is a contract without the Chief Procurement Officer's signature on it. Again, tonight is a contract that's before us, without the town accountant saying that the money is there. I appreciate and do trust Joe. No confidence whatsoever left in the town administrator, as I've said. No, uh, letter from the department head who put it together recommending it, which I do believe that there was one in the last packet that I read. So it isn't personal. It has never been personal, and you have done an outstanding job on this. And I know that the, the benefit to the taxpayer is gigantic. But how many times does the Board of Selectmen, the governing elected body, have to ask for the same things from a single source and not get them before they just start voting no on everything? And I have no confidence in that Chief Procurement Officer, but I do have confidence in Sean Libby, and I do have confidence in Joe Powers. Therefore, I will support this contract.
Any more discussion?
Same for me.
Okay. Favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's passed. Okay, moving on to, uh, town administrative reports.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, um, the item I'll speak with is, speak to is Item A, potential reuse of the current East Harwich Fire Station. As you recall, this board had directed staff to work with Chief Clark and his team. We did that on Friday last, where Chief Clark, Deputy Chief LeBlanc hosted the town engineer, town planner, health director, building commissioner, and yours truly. And we checked out the present site of Fire Station 2. We got a nice tour of the future Fire Station 2 as well. But bottom line on that particular site visit is that all parties agreed that whatever happens for the reuse, the building that's there does need to be demolished. So there, that wanted to advocate for the building to remain. So the staff recommendation is that demolition on the building proceed as planned. I will tell you that the town planner and the health director are working on additional documentation that they hope to get through administration to the board at a later date. But bottom line present is that the building itself should be demolished as planned, and that will offer perhaps a better discussion of reuse of the property itself.
Chief, you wish to comment on this, because I think you brought this up, and by an area we need some further discussion on.
So it's pretty obvious, I'm not a town surveyor, an engineer, or, or the like. But I've had folks say that, geez, why don't we reuse Station 2? I thought it was, I think it's a good idea. But I've also publicly and to the board that the land's far more, worth far more than the building is. The reality is, the old station is too close to the new station. If we reuse that station forever, and there has been interest from at least one business owner, a sincere interest, we would have to build a $35,000 wall in the rear of the new station. And that, at best, would allow maybe 15 feet to walk between the two properties. It's just simply too close. Now, the other, the other issue that pops up is, well, if it was good enough, wasn't good enough for the fire department, why is it now good enough for someone else to use? That's a totally separate, totally, totally separate discussion. We, we evaluated reusing that station and adding on to it, and it was going to cost about a million dollars more. I naively said, sure, I, I, what, you know, it's probably a good idea to reuse the, I was excited about someone wanting to use it. But the administrator was notified, I, I said to the, to anybody, you have to go through the channels. First channel is reach out to the town administrator. So that was done. And, and through his direction, I believe, the staff from Town Hall, that is very knowledgeable on runoff, square footage, zoning, all of that stuff, came to the same conclusion that the station, as it sits, the old station, is not appropriate for reuse. And I'm disappointed in that, but quite frankly, we had no, we, we, that new station was, was positioned on that lot. You know, if, if I had to do it over again, I would have even pulled it back. But we positioned that station to make the rest of that property as attractive as possible for future use.
So your intent tonight is to put that discussion to rest then?
I would like some direction, as I've asked for, you know, in an email to the board and to the, to administration. And we followed up with, with the experts from Town Hall. And we came to the conclusion that the station should be demolished as it was planned for. I had budgeted money for that, and I'm looking for the selectmen to say, proceed as planned.
On it next week?
Because we'll follow your suggestion, I'm sure. We'll just, that's a good idea. We'll do it on agenda, so it's legal, and we'll bring it back and hold on it.
And, and just for the record, I, I would take the recommendation of the town staff as well. So if you're looking for a consensus, I think you probably have it.
If you, yeah, yeah, I would really like some consensus. I'm trying to move the project along.
We, we're going to follow...
I know the contractor wants to move it along as well.
Yeah. Ed?
I, I, I really don't want to create any work for anybody, but is, has the review been documented in any sort of notes on the deficiencies of the building and the...
Well, we did that, we did a, you know, a study way back when, prior to coming to town meeting. We made presentations to this board as to why we didn't want to reuse that station.
Let me suggest we, let me suggest we add that to the packet on the agenda, so we have document, we can fax behind your suggestion.
If I'm reading Ed correctly, he's looking for a, a memo that they did a site visit last week, and their recommendation and yours is, let's tear it down, and if we want to sell the land, then we'll revisit that, right? Do we want to get notes?
I, I, I don't have the ability to offhand go back and find all the documentation from four years ago about the old station.
Last week's meeting, Norm.
I'm not worried about four years ago. I'm worried about...
Chairman, I can create a memo based on a site visit.
Okay, that's all we're asking for, Norm.
Just give a, a, you know, ball, headline, uh...
Absolutely.
You know, points of what the deficiencies are, you know, so we have...
Mr. Chair?
Thank you. Don?
Yeah, just, yeah, just as a postscript to this, I don't care what the condition of the building is, the adjacency of that building to the new building, and your concerns about...
the adjacency of that building to the new building, and your concerns about that. Unless we put the building on roller skates and move it, it's not going to change anything. I don't care what the inside looks like.
It's too close. It's just too close.
It'd make an exciting place to be.
Having roller skates.
It's too close because of noise, because of turning radius?
It's physically too close. For the site plan that was approved, the site plan that was engineered, the new station is what it is. The rear parking lot is what it is. The new station is literally going to be ten, twenty feet from that parking. We have to, again, it's going to cost $35,000 to build a wall just to hold the dirt, the wall.
You have a grade difference.
Yes. Yeah, it's too close.
I haven't been able to tour the site at all, so I have no idea what your site conditions are.
Okay. Joe, we, thank you, Chief, and you're taking that and bringing some minutes on that meeting.
Mr. Chairman, the last item on my report is just a reminder that the board's meeting next week is Tuesday, October 15th, because of the holiday. Thank you.
Thank you. Don, for the sequence reports?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yesterday, Site Law Services had its annual dinner, and this year's guest of honor was Carla Burke, our vital representative. And, oh, I want to say about a half dozen people from the trustees and the library staff came to honor her. It was just a terrific, she gave a terrific presentation.
Thank you, Don. Ed? Michael?
Nothing.
I have one item, and that is, a couple weeks ago, I mentioned that Carol Capola has offered to hold a finance budget workshop in FinCom and Capital. I did get back from Capital Ave at their best date. It was October 29th. And I was having, that's a Wednesday. And so, I'm going to go ahead and schedule that. I know probably, I'm asking three committees, they're offering it for three. And I'm going to go ahead and ask if we schedule that, and those who can make it, make it. The purpose is not to sway anyone's opinion on where we're going. The purpose is to be sure we all are talking the same language.
At night?
At six o'clock. Because I think we talk a lot. We don't know everything, so this will help out.
I used to know everything, but then I turned 16.
I'll entertain it. I'm ignoring that, Don.
I will forget your turn. Second. Well, you're, 14 is the pinnacle of all...